Welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education. This event occurs annually, post-November election, to seat the new board members that were successful in the election. So, there's a series of steps. My name is Shawn Boyce. I'm the Business Administrator for the District and Board Secretary, so I'll be facilitating the process for the first few steps here. First order of business is to read aloud the official election results, so let me do that now. For Coltsneck Township, Carl Astetola received 6,899 votes. There were 111 write-ins. In Freehold Borough, Amanda McCob received 6,291 votes, and there was 87 write-ins. Freehold Township, Elizabeth Higley received 7,297 votes, and there were 111 write-ins there. And in Marlborough Township, Mr. Messinger received 8,892 votes, and there were 128 write-ins on that ballot. So, I'd like to congratulate all four board members for their success at the poll, and welcome you to the Board of Education. So, the next step here will be to administer the oath of office and seat the board members, and then I'll take the roll call officially. So, I'll ask the members of the board, newly-elected members of the board, which, by the way, three of those are for three-year terms, and the Freehold Borough seat is for the unexpired one-year term. So, typically, those three board members we're swearing in, but we have four tonight. So, first, I'll ask Mr. Astetola to come. You raise your right hand, take the oath of office, and then you can take your seat at the table.
I call Astetola to solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under authority of the people, so help me God. That's it. Oh, we got the second part? Okay. I'm gonna raise this, Shawn, because you know. I call Astetola to solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA-18A-12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Yeah, take your seat at the table. Next, I'd like to ask Ms. McCob to come to the podium, raise your right hand, and take the oath of office.
I, Amanda McCob, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Amanda McCob, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA-18A-12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Ms. McCob. Ms. Higley, I'd like to invite you up to take the oath of office.
I, Elizabeth Higley, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Elizabeth Higley, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA-18A-12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And now, Mr. Messinger. I'd like to invite you to podium, take the oath of office.
I, Michael Messinger, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Michael Messinger, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by the law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA-18A-12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, so now that the board is seated, I'm gonna take roll call. Mr. Astetola?
President.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Mr. Bruno.
Mrs. Capiello?
Here.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCob?
Here.
Mr. Messinger?
Here.
Mr. Parisi?
Here.
Thank you. So, the next item of business on the agenda is the election for the office of President of the Board of Education. So, I will open the floor for nominations. Any member of the board can nominate any other member of the board. No second is required. And when it becomes apparent that there are no further nominations, I will ask for a motion to take the appropriate action at that time. So, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the office of President of the Board of Education for the Freehold Regional High School District. Mr. Messinger nominates Mr. Bruno. Seeing no further nominations, I'm going to request a motion, and the motion is to close nominations and instruct the Board Secretary to cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Peter Bruno for the office of President of the Board of Education. So, may I have a motion? I heard Mrs. Higley, Mrs. McCob. And now, I will take roll. Mr. Astetola? Mrs. Bruno? Mr. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Lavin? Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Bruno. So, we'll need a motion to close nominations and instruct the Board Secretary to cast a unanimous ballot for Michael Messinger for the office of Vice President of the Board of Education. So, may I have that motion? It's the motion to close nominations and instruct the... Yes. Need a motion? I'm sorry. Who? Motion, Mrs. Higley? I need a second also, please. Second, Mrs. Bruno? Roll call. Mr. Astetola? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Lavin? Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Congratulations. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Messinger.
I had a very interesting last year with a lot of topics. The board last year was a very tight board, very close between the budget and S2 and picking and selecting a new superintendent. We had a very full plate that lasted all the way through the summer. So, I want to thank the board, welcome Carl again back onto the Board of Education, but we have a very cohesive group, and hopefully, we'll continue that way. And I promise the board members that I will not call them at 6:00 in the morning, because I do have a habit of calling people at 6:00 a.m. So, I promise I will... I only did that once.
My mom's doesn't have.
Yeah. Because Mrs. Bruno, Jamie, she opens MENS in the morning, apparently. She's a teacher custodian. She opens the building. So, let's go further now. We're going to have our ethics training. Did everybody get an ethics session?
For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jeff Gachazy. I know it doesn't look like that here, but it's hard to say my name, but that's it. So, we're gonna do your school board ethics review. You have in front of you an acknowledgement of receipt as well, so once we finish this, if you would sign that, I'd appreciate that. So, just as a reminder, this presentation doesn't replace your individual ethics training required for all newly-elected and appointed board members. I have a hard time seeing this myself. So, the purpose of this training is to discuss the School Ethics Act and just kind of go through the highlights of it with you, because it is important as board members that you understand your ethical roles. So, as board members, you are the governing body for the school district, all right? You're charged with high-level policymaking, which, as you'll see in this presentation, is not administration of the schools. It's just that high-level policymaking. Your decision-making authority is limited to that. So, you've got to be careful not to engage in conflicts of interest. The Ethics Act, as I go through, is what governs you as board members. All right. That is the School Ethics Act. What I will point out in the School Ethics Act, which is important, and I highlighted it, which is hold the respect and confidence of the people and avoid conduct, and I had it, which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. So, it's not just actual conduct that violates the act, it's that impression that you may give the public. It's important to note that a technical violation of the act might just be the impression, not your intent, just the impression you give the public. So, it's important to conduct yourselves, and as you'll see, we'll talk about social media is one of the big things, why you have First Amendment privileges. They are limited as your role as board members. The first act... Excuse me. I apologize. I have this backwards. I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes that should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures, that's NJSA-18A-12241A. Basically, follow the rules. So, if there are laws in place, board policy. If you have court orders, you need to follow them. It's really that simple. So, if the DOE provides guidance or provides regulations, you need to follow that. I'll say briefly, we have cases in here. I'm not gonna go through each and every case with you. You're more than welcome to go through it. If you have questions, you can ask. There are the C designation of the cases, so this one, C-5814, those are actual case decisions. You will see A designations. Those are advisory opinions. You can, as board members, we can, as a board, ask for advisory opinions when there are concerns or questions about ethical conflicts or any ethics issue you may have. So, if there's questions that you have, and you say, "Is this an ethical violation?" and we don't really have a good answer, we can get an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission. All right. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, and social standing. I will amend that to say those designations, those protected categories should be expanded to include all the protected categories in New Jersey law against discrimination. But it's really, you know, you're here for one reason, the kids. Kids come first, and you need to keep that in the back of your head as board members, that your educational decisions are for their benefit. Again, some of the cases, there's that A designation I talked about, that's an advisory And I apologize for reading at you, but it's the law, so you need the exact wording. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them. So, look at the big picture, and this will kind of go hand-in-hand with the next section of the act, which is no micromanaging. So, your role is confined to policymaking. Well, not just policymaking, but that's your major role here. Your major function is oversight of the school district, not day-to-day operations. As we go through some of the cases, look at the big picture, you'll see the next one is just that, no micromanaging. So, NJSA-18A-12241D. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. It's important to say "together" with my fellow board members, because as a board, you act as one. You don't act individually. You are not individual representatives of the board. All decisions are to be made by a board as a whole, and that's your function. Just a couple more of these cases, again, you're free to look at. 24.1E. I will recognize that the authority vested Board of Education will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. It's pretty straightforward. You can't make personal promises. You can't have gains for yourself as board members. You're functioning as a board. Like I said earlier, the kids come first. Again, some more cases. 24.1F. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gains or for the gain of friends. Kind of goes, again, hand-in-hand with the other one. You're here as a board, as board members. You're not here for yourselves individually. You're here, and so you obviously can't gain any advantage by being here. All right, this is one of... Not that they're all not important, but this is one where we see violations quite a bit, and it's concerning. 24.1G. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. So, you as board members will gain confidential information, as you know, when you're in the executive session. It may be staff information, maybe student information, maybe related to collective negotiations, contracts, land purchase, could be a number of different things. That information is to be kept confidential. So, basically, if you're in that... If the discussion's in that room, it stays in that room. If you tell anyone about it, you're violating the act. All right. 24.1H. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer. So, the superintendent makes recommendations for hiring. It's your job as board members, you don't make the recommendations yourself. You can't. That's a violation of the act. You can't hire people as a board by yourselves. You need a recommendation from the superintendent. If the superintendent gives the recommendation, then you can hire at that point. There are very few instances where you can go against that recommendation, but that's typically gonna be a violation if you're not heeding the recommendation of the superintendent, unless you have good cause to do otherwise. All right. That's the act itself. We have a few slides in here with some cases, just to talk about, for example, no lone wolves. These are some of the issues that we see representing a number of different districts, is board members acting in an individual capacity. So, as a board, as I said earlier, you function as a board. You're gonna get complaints from the community members, maybe staff, maybe folks outside of the community. They may ask you questions. Remember, you... I'll even go even further. You may get inquiries from the press. You are board members. You don't act independently or individually, so if they're, for example, if you have to give a statement to the press, you have a policy for that. It's only the superintendent who typically can speak to the press. The board president can as well, in limited circumstances. That's a little... Refer to your policy for that purpose. But when you're speaking to folks outside about board business, you have to be very careful, because you only function as a board, not as individuals. I will support... I'm sorry. 24.1J. I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. This one, I will actually go over quickly one of the cases, because I think it's a good example. The last one, over here, C-2511. The board president violated the code by posting a picture of the superintendent on Facebook with a comment, "Now, if we can only do something about our local terrorists that destroy dreams and burn futures." Obviously, that's a violation of the act. You're not supporting district personnel. That's your job as board members, to support. Doesn't mean you have to agree with them, but you need to support them. That... Listen, that's a violation for a number of different reasons. This is just an example of why it's not supporting district personnel. I'm sorry, this is J. I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, and will act on the complaints of public meetings only after failure of any administrative solution. As I said earlier, you're gonna get complaints from maybe parents, staff. Not your job to address those complaints directly, and you certainly can't go and go to another administrator, like a principal. There's specific cases on that. You need to go and speak to the superintendent directly. The person may be complaining about a staff member, or a principal, or any other administrator. And whether you agree or disagree, your obligation, then, is to go to the superintendent and report that. It's not to go to the principal, it's not to go to another administrator, another staff member. That is a clear violation of the act. Now, I'm not gonna go through each and every conflicts of interest. I believe Mr. Toscano has... And if he hasn't yet, you will be receiving a questionnaire about conflicts of interest so we can analyze your conflicts. These are some of the laws related to it, but I can break it down pretty simply. If you have relatives that are in the school district, or you have relatives that are in other school districts in the state, you should let us know so we can analyze, especially for negotiation purposes, what you can and can't vote on. If you are involved with a business entity in any way, whether it's your employer, or you have some relationship with that business entity, you should let us know so we can analyze the conflicts and determine whether you can vote on certain items if those business entities have relationships to the school district. With more board conflicts, these are some more laws about what's not. Let's focus on what is. Just talking relatives in a district, that's really specific to collective negotiations and whether you can be on or involved in negotiations. So, again, let us know. And then we just go through a couple of advisory opinions, just for frame of reference for you folks for substitutes. This advisory opinion, where a board member spouses employed as a substitute in the district, the board member can't participate in personnel actions related to the chain of command of that substitute. So, that's why we just tell us, if you do have anybody, if you have any questions, err on the side of telling us. Volunteering. We have some examples in here. The simple... There's no simple answer for it, but I would say that there is certain tests that we can look at based on the relationships. So, if you have questions about whether... Look, we want to encourage volunteering, obviously, but we don't want to put you in an ethically compromised position. So, if you're volunteering, just let us know. We'll talk about the facts and give you an answer. If we can't give you an answer, we'll get an advisory opinion. Some more advisory opinions. Doctrine of necessity. I'll just tell you, if we need to use it, we'll need to know well in advance. I'm sure Shawn, Nicole, and Mark will be talking. Simple answer to that. The simple explanation of this is if you don't have enough members of the board to vote on a particular item because of conflicts, you can institute a doctrine of necessity to allow you to vote, but it requires a resolution in advance. It's a process, but you should be aware that it is there in the event there are conflicts. As I said earlier, you have an acknowledgement of the Code of Ethics in front of you, so if you can sign it, that'd be great, unless there are any questions?
I think I have one.
Yeah, sure.
So, what is one mistake or one...
No, not just one. There's lots.
Give me more.
The confidentiality is always... Social media is the biggest, to me. We see a lot of issues that arise about whether it's disclosing confidential information, talking about staff members. I mean, that's really... The big thing is usually disclosing confidential information. But yeah, you've got to be careful about what you say as a board member, and you have First Amendment rights, but they are now limited because you're a board member and you... amendment rights, but they are now limited because you're a board member and you have confidential information. So you have to keep that in mind when you're speaking about anything related to the district. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
First, I want to qualify this by stating that I know of no violation whatsoever by any member of the board or anybody in this district. However, it's incumbent upon, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if a board member or anyone else sees a violation of law that has to remain confidential, that they would, they are protected via whistleblower act, and they're allowed to, just vigilantly, report that violation to, let's say, the state control office, or whatever government or enforcement body.
So the question, I mean, I don't want to, I know you're talking about the Conscientious Employer Protection Act, and we can talk about that separately. There, it's a complicated law, there's a lot of components to it. Obviously, if you're reporting conduct, you have a right to do that. As a board member, as an individual, as a community member, everybody has a right to report conduct that they believe is a violation of the law. Yeah.
So you don't have to go through somebody who's implicit in, and again, I'm just throwing this out as an example. Of course, I know if somebody's doing that, but you don't have to go through the board if they're implicit in that act for violation. I taught many ethical courses, and what I would always say is go to the attorney first.
Well, so you, as a board member, you have certain duties. Not to say you can't, or shouldn't, report certain things, but as an individual board member, you have a certain obligation and duty to the board. So if you were aware of something, whether it's the Ethics Act or any other violation of the law, maybe it's a criminal law, for example, then obviously you want to inform administration, you want to inform the board attorney. But obviously, if you think there's a violation of criminal law and it's not being reported, you, as a board member, have the right to report it.
Anybody of the board members have any questions to ask? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
I'd be one. Okay, Diana, did we have a second down here?
Second, Amanda.
Second, Amanda. All those in favor? We're going to go into executive session. Thank you, folks, for staying. Did you go out to dinner or something? You just kind of stayed, you just stayed, great. Well, Happy New Year. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, this meeting was sent to the Asbury Press on June 27, 2023, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Press issue of June 30, 2023. All municipal clerks in the township, in the boroughs, within the Freehold Regional District have been duly notified, and the requirements were met, June 27, 2023. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, law.
Do we have any changes to the executive agenda?
Yes, I'd like to note that one of the items listed on the printed agenda, Negotiations Bus Drivers Association, was not discussed.
That's all. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve C1 through C6?
Mrs. Lavin? I'm sorry, who was the second?
Diana?
Diana.
Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Acetola?
Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiolo? Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Lavin? Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
May I have the motion to approve the minutes of the December 14 regular board meeting?
Moved.
I hear Mr. Parisi, and I, uh...
Mrs. Capiolo?
Capiolo, is that Amanda?
Is that who it was?
Yes. Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Acetola? Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiolo? Mrs. Higley? Uh, Mrs. Lavin? Ms. McCob? Mr. Parisi? Mr. Messinger? Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Just to note, the communications are on file in the board secretary's office. Now, I'm going to throw it over to Dr. Hazel for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Happy New Year to everyone, to our students and families. We are so excited as we enter the new year, and this month, we will be welcoming all of our rising ninth graders, and we'll be inviting them to the school for our orientation programs. That will be going on during the month of January. This provides a tremendous opportunity for the leadership in the guidance department to be able to share information with our new students and families in regards to our course offerings, all of the programs that we offer in, you know, their prospective high school, the extracurricular and athletic programs, and our building principals and the administrative teams are directly communicating with those eighth grade families, inviting them in for these events. So we are looking forward to welcoming the class of 2028, I can't even believe it, for, to the Freehold Regional High School District. There are a series of dates, and the parents, you know, of our rising ninth graders get direct communications from our building principals. We have articulations with the sending district, so we know all of our, you know, new rising ninth graders coming in, and those communications come directly to the building, to those families, inviting them in for these orientation programs. And they get to learn everything about, you know, their new high school, as well as our district. Just wanted to let everybody know, we are keeping an eye on the weather. I think we're hopefully going to have a rain event this weekend. I'm hopeful and optimistic, but I have been in communication with the sending district superintendents. I think this district, as well as our sending district partners, really do a great job in working together and collaborating and staying in touch with each other to make sure that we are making the best decisions in regard to any school closures or delayed openings, and that we, you know, handle that, you know, expeditiously, so that we can handle everything we need to in our Buildings and Grounds Department, as well as our Transportation Department. So, you know, just know that, you know, this administration, as well as all of our sending districts, we work very collaboratively on, you know, making the best decisions for the safety and well-being of our students and staff. Also, I just wanted to make our communities aware that all of our high schools are offering tutoring programs, and those tutoring programs are to support students in any of the classes that they may be struggling in or want some additional support. These are programs that are run through our administrative teams, as well as our guidance departments. They are in all six of our high schools and available to our students. There's also a program that's going to start this month, in January, January through the March administration of the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, the NJGPA, which is the State Assessment of Record, providing support to our juniors in the area of language arts and mathematics. And that's for all of the juniors, and that's really to just give them a boost of confidence, refreshing them on, you know, their skills, and, you know, giving them the test prep practice that we feel will just, you know, give them that extra boost in preparation for that test. The state testing is the week of March 11. So I'm very proud of the work of our administrators, many of them here, who I know have been instrumental in kind of spearheading those support programs, you know, for our students. And, you know, that goes without saying that our programs here successfully build students' skills and knowledge from grade nine all the way through, but we do feel, at a critical time, right before they are taking these assessments, you know, every piece of additional support just gives them kind of the extra confidence they need to know that they are ready to take that assessment. So I just want to thank all of our administrators, many of them here, and all of the teachers who partake in supporting our students beyond the school day in this effort.
And of course, we're in the midst of middle states.
Yes. So, yeah, this year, every seven years, actually, for us, it was eight due to COVID, but we are going through a middle states accreditation process. We already had our first systems team meeting, we're preparing for our second one in January, and our third, I believe, is March or April, that will be coming down the pike, and this is a great opportunity when all of the district constituents, our staff, our parents, our students, all come together, we reflect on all of our work, there are surveys that we're taking with staff, students, and parents, we look at our, you know, all of the data in the district, and set some goals for ourselves, really in alignment with our district strategic plan that we are in year one of right now, Compass 3.0. And, you know, we're excited for that journey, middle states being a seven-year journey, our Compass 3.0 plan is a five-year plan, but working, you know, collaboratively with all of our constituents to really lock into goals and action plans to continue us on our road of excellence here at Freehold Regional.
Can you have a time, excited about the middle states?
Yes, Mr. Bruno joined us for our first systems team meeting, so that was wonderful.
We have a special guest with us tonight, so I want to, you want to say hello?
Oh.
Yeah.
Hello, and I see the assistant also, I would like, at this time, if you could please stand, Senator Gopal. You know, we, yes, I know, you have a very, very busy schedule, and we appreciate you being here this evening, we appreciate all of your support to this Board of Education, to this school district, for all of your service, your tenacity, your advocacy for what you did for us. We need a lot more help, you know that, we'll definitely be talking. Your job is not done. Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Okay, we do not have any board reports tonight, and we do have some people who would like to speak. The podium's over here, but before we do that, do we have any changes to the board agenda?
We do have one, and I would like to return to changes in the executive agenda, although falling under the general caption of HIV report that was included on the pre-printed agenda. More specifically, there was also discussion of a recent HIV appeal heard by members of the board, so we'll include that on the executive agenda as well. The one addition to the board agenda for action being considered for action tonight, we're going to add in at K6 on the agenda, and I'll read it into the record, motion to deny the hit appeal in connection with report number CNHS-23-24-05. So in addition to the pre-printed agenda, K6 will also be considered in the vote.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to have some of our speakers come up. Senator, come up, come on.
Yes, yes.
Just very briefly, just looking forward to working, congratulations to three new board members. I know we have a lot of challenges coming up as S2 comes to an end. I know you guys are exempted, I know there's a lot of staffing shortages, mental health funding, transportation, so just looking forward to working with all of you. Anything I can do, I'm here for the next four years, looking forward, I had a great relationship with Superintendent Sampson, hope to have the same great relationship with you, and just wish you all well, Happy New Year.
And I know where to find you, I'm St. Patrick's Day in Delmar.
Yes, you do.
Or Halloween.
Thank you, Senator.
At Halloween. Thank you.
So we have a couple of people from the community today who would like to speak. Barry, that is live, that podium?
Yes, it's been a while since I've been here. Say hello to the people I know, hello to the people I don't know. Congratulations to those who were elected. I just have two quick things, one for Dr. Hazel, it's a little late, but congratulations, I wish you the best in your new position there. And for Carl Acetola, I'm very surprised, but I know that his integrity, he wanted to come back, he wants to do the work for the people, and I know he'll do a good job. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. And Leon? Leon, you look very familiar.
I didn't hear what you said.
You look very familiar.
Thank you. I just want to say, before I start my remarks, that if we had that Code of Ethics that we've heard about this evening, some of us wouldn't have to be here 15 years ago. I feel like an aging ballplayer coming back to his old stadium on Old Timer's Day. It's been over 13 years since I've last attended one of these meetings, and it's nice to see fellow teammate, former board member Barry Hochberg, as we bear witness to another teammate, Carl Acetola, still in the game, as he gets sworn in for another year on active service. One other person, I'm sorry to say, Gloria Close, was very determined to be here with us, but she sadly passed away over a month ago after a long illness. She really was determined to be here for Carl. Barry and his wife, and Gloria and my wife, were part of a very determined group of citizens who regularly attended these meetings every month for almost five years, speaking out against the injustice of an arrogant superintendent and other board members who got phony doctorate degrees. It took a long time, but with Mr. Acetola's help on the inside, justice finally prevailed, and the Freehold Regional District was able to restore its good name and reach the level of success it deserved. Unfortunately, in today's fractured political culture, we read that school boards have become an easy target for outside political influence that have nothing to do with the demands of the district. That's why it's comforting to see a dedicated community servant like Carl Acetola back on the board to make sure this train stays on its tracks. Congratulations, Carl.
Thank you. And Carol Fox?
Good evening. I used to be in this room every month for many years, and I haven't been back in quite a while, but I've been keeping an eye, always watching. And on that note, I am absolutely so thrilled to welcome Carl Acetola back. He's dedicated, he's conscientious, he's caring, he will help guide this board even further with the right purpose in mind. Sometimes we all go astray, and I know I can count on him and other board members to do the right thing and not go backwards. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, do have one question. The electronic sign at Marlboro High School has been up for about almost 15 years. I complained about it at least twice 10 years ago, and it's still never changed. It says, it might say welcome, but it says WWW. It says, it might say welcome, but it says www.fhrsd.com, and follow our Twitter page. There's got to be some recognition of students, happy holidays, something. I don't think the sign is unstuck, but it never changes, and it's insulting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fox, and we're looking to that matter. Thank you. And thank you for your support. All right, may I have a motion to approve H1 through H8?
Motion.
Second.
That was Ms. McCob and Mrs. Capiello. Okay. Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Acetola. Mrs. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello. Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Ms. McCob.
Yes.
Mr. Perici.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve I1 through J3?
Second.
Diana and Amanda. Any discussion, board? No discussion. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Acetola. Mrs. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello. Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Ms. McCob.
Yes.
Mr. Perici.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger. Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now we're going to take K1 through L4, that's Educational Programs and Administration. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Mr. Perici and second Mrs. Capiello. Mrs. Bruno. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, may I for a second?
Yeah.
I just want to let the board know that I added L4 on the school board representative here, or the New Jersey School Board Association representative, and January is School Board Recognition Month, so I reached out, and this is a resolution that school boards, you know, created and sends to districts throughout the state so that each district can adopt this resolution. And it's a feel-good resolution, make no mistake about it, but it's worth noting that as, you know, one board member to my fellow board members, I just want to recognize that this is School Board Recognition Month, and I want to thank everybody for your service to this board, as well as all of the sending districts that service the Freehold Regional District community, and all the board members on those respective boards as well. So I won't read the resolution, it's there for you to read it, but it's, you know, I think we owe appreciation to each other, and I just wanted to express that on the record for everybody.
Thank you. That was, we had to.
So roll call, Mr. Acetola. Mrs. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley. Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Ms. McCob.
Yes.
Mr. Perici.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger. Mr. Bruno.
Yes. Do we have any old business board members? Anybody have any old business? How about any new business? Any new business?
Yes, if I may, Mr. President. First of all, I want to recognize another old board, old, not old, still young, previous board member, Mary Anthe Madzic, who I convinced many years ago to join me in my initial run for, for the board, and thank you for your service. She's now, I tutored her a lot, so now she's in attorney with Harvard, so I think I was pretty successful in, you know, helping you along through your career share. Barry was my initial run mate, and we go back a long time. Thank you for your support. Leon Silofer, thank you so much for your kind words. I can't believe it's 13 years, and perhaps the strongest community advocate I've ever met in my life, Carol Fox is in the audience, and I appreciate you coming out to me and giving me my words. So thank you so much, and to your spouses for being here. I appreciate all the accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you, senior.
One more thing.
Sure.
I'm so sorry about Mrs. Close's loss. We would frequently go to the diner after the appointments, and it's a tragic loss. She, she always was here to do what she felt was correct, and that's it.
All right, so now we're going to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion.
I heard Amanda, and I heard Mrs. Lavin. All in favor? Safe trip home.